Call the regular council meeting on Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, May 20th, 2015. Order ask everyone to please ride, we're gonna have to be in locations, I'd like counsel for Tara, followed by the pledge of allegiance, then like.
You can bear with me tonight, this is a very long prayer, but we think that we may stand here for an extra minute while I read this. Prayer is a prayer about Memorial Day, about all the people who lost their lives for a victory, we make a little sacrifice. This is a prayer from Memorial Day. Our nation endures and thrives because of the devotion of our men and women in uniform, who from generation to generation carry a burden heavier than any we may ever know. On Memorial Day, we honor those who have borne conflicts to greatest costs, born with the wounds of war and flesh, and pray for a just lasting peace. The American fabric is stitched through stories of sons and daughters who gave their lives and service to their family they loved. They were patriots who overthrew an empire and sparked revolution. They were courageous men and women who stood to hold a union, a young union together. They were ordinary citizens who go back and creep into title tyranny, who stood post through a long twilight struggle, who saw terror and extremism threaten our rural security and set off home. Though their stories are unique to the challenges they faced, our fallen service members were forever bound by a legacy of valor, boldness, and liberty itself. Now they lay resting, quiet corners of our country and the world, but they live on it in families who love them and in the soul of the nation that is safe for their service. On Memorial Day, we join together and pray for the fallen. We remember all who have borne the battle, whose devotion to duty has sustained our country and kept safe our heritage as a free people and a free society. Though our hearts ache in their absence, we find comfort in knowing that their legacy lives on in all of us and the security that lets us live in peace. The prosperity that allows us to pursue our dreams and the love that still beats in those who know them. May God bless the souls of the honorable warriors who have lost. May he watch over the men and women who serve us now, today, tomorrow, in perpetuity. Let us give thanks to them by remaining true to the values and virtues for which they fight. Amen.
I find this to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, with a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't call.
Tara.
Here.
Conway.
Here.
Evan.
Here.
Lasky. Mace.
Here.
Sarnson. Bereski.
Here. One of the reading of minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 5th, 2015. Motion to adjourn. If they have some questions or comments, anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did anyone oppose no?
Under special business, I just want to give the Council a Chris update. The first major deadline is looming, June 1st, our Chris authority has to submit a master business list to the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue. And that is a list of all of the business enterprises that are doing business in the 297 different parcels that are in Tamaka Chris. There's many, many business enterprises that you can imagine. And then each of those business enterprises has to submit an online Pennsylvania Department of Revenue form by June 15th. We could send out letters with the information on how to file and the importance, not just because it gets tax dollars coming back from Tamaka, but also the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue push buying to business entities a thousand dollars, if they don't submit. I've had a lot of calls and questions about, I just want to update Council, that you all know, you can answer the questions. I know Kevin and Christine have been talking to events and questions and helping with those things. The Chris designation is not optional, businesses don't have the option of opting out or making the Chris. They're either in the Chris or they're not. And if they're in the Chris, they have to file, that's the Department of Revenue. It's the only way the Department of Revenue knows that their tax, new tax dollars come back to the community. So if you get questions, please, if they haven't called me, if that's why Kevin, we happen to answer them. It's important, and it's not, we don't want them to fill out the form that would weigh a thousand dollar fine, although that is important. We want them to fill out the form because that's how they track the tax revenue and that's what we're sure we can get that money back. You know, if Department of Revenue is gonna go by our, the business list that we submit and new business entities on that list, Department of Revenue is gonna hold them accountable for going on that form. So, we contacted all the property owners by mail many months ago to do the designation, let them know the same thing. We also sent a letter last week, or even about thirty days' notice that they have to fill this online form. It's an online tax form, just like it is when you do your Pennsylvania business taxes online. There is no paper form, it's all online. So, I hope, if you get questions, and I hope you do, you know, I hope you're closing that, that allows this criticism, so that we can have a chance to explain what it is and what it isn't. But I did have several people asking if they're required to do it, and yes, they're required to do it. If a property is vacant, they're not required, there's no business entity on it. If it's a residential property, if you do some residential properties, they're not required, only active business enterprises. But it also includes nonprofit organizations, so Citizens Fire Company, nonprofit organization, required to fill this out, so whoever does your taxes, you should let them know. East Empire Company, basically anybody with a liquor license, we include in the Chris because the sale, the tax on liquor sales comes back to the community. So, anybody has any questions, please send them, I mean, I'm encouraging them to submit a form by June 15th.
This is, all the businesses that are within the town, you must send this into the Chris.
No, all the businesses, all the businesses that are in the Chris. There's 297 tax parcels that are in the Chris, and any business that's in that Chris will have to send this. It's almost every business, because it's almost the whole downtown, it's every bar and restaurant, it's, you know, it's the Jambly Shopping Plaza.
Basically, it goes out to Sisters and the industrial park?
It goes out to Sisters, it doesn't go to the industrial park in hometown.
No. Okay. Like Cartbells?
Uh, I don't think Cartbells is included, but the Lehigh Asphalt across the street is included, the nine acre industrial property, commercial property between there and that borders is included, the CVS building which is sold is included, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of properties in it. So if anybody has a question about whether or not they're in it or not, we send out a letter to everybody, and we did get, some people responded, asking, hey, look, we're not in business, there's his own business here, so we will remove them if I may ask. But it's not every business in the borough, including the Times News. So I hate to see that, I hate to see that in court services, they cost very much. I've been contacted by many attorneys, and many accountants, and many tax preparers, which is a good thing. So if anybody have any question, I have a question that I want to give you initially. This sets the baseline year, so the tax year 2014 is the floor, and anything that goes above that floor gets sent back to the Department of Chris already, so it's really important that people submit those, like, if you're.
What else is there, excuse me, what?
If they're nonprofit organizations? I don't know if they have, I don't know if they have any business activities there. If there's no business in that form, there's no penalty for going in there, you put your tax ID number in, you put down into zero revenue, zero sales. You know, but the form is pretty easy to fill out, I did it for myself, and ask for your tax ID number, your Pennsylvania payable withholding tax number, which is okay, employees, available attaches, and also your sales tax, and a couple others, basically your tax ID number. And then, like it was a case on Ted.
When in doubt.
When in doubt, probably.
Mike, so the government is interested in knowing is how much revenue was created by these 297 places?
Twenty places.
How much revenue taxes?
Taxes.
How much taxes? How much state taxes or liquor taxes? So, okay, that's the number, so let's say that that number is going to be a half million dollars, and then how will we use that?
Well, if in 2014, those businesses paid a half million dollars in state taxes, and then in 2015, they pay 750,000 in taxes, the state will send Tamaka a check for 250,000 dollars.
Not an annual salary.
So it's that increment, and so we're trying to set that baseline, and then anything above that increment comes back to us. I'm frankly curious how much taxes our businesses pay to have a revenue, so I'm just curious what potential one is, I mean, I mean, it'll be bigger than the interest. If anybody has any questions, if your business or your organization or property may have got a letter, I put my cellphone in there, keep it in the call, so maybe they'll call me or all.
Now, if your property is residential, that's your home occupation, it's a business, that's what we've been advising people is fill it out.
Or if you have a property that has multiple business entities on it, each entity has to.
And the older two are?
If they, if they generate, if they make money, absolutely rented.
That's what we've been advising people, there's been quite a few calls.
We also reached out to the accountants, the tax preparers, and let them know that businesses, they have clients that are doing business in Chris, that this is a professional company. Maybe they'll have any questions, if you have any questions after that. Just Christina and Kevin have been doing a really nice job helping prepare that. So we have a submission that's due with the master business list, it's due June 1st, and then all the business entities have to turn in their documents.
All right, communications.
I have two, first is from Citizens Fire Company Number One, the Zar Committee. Once again, it is time for our annual bizarre on July 10th, 11th, and 12th. As in the past, we would like permission from the Borough Council to close Hengery Avenue from July 6th through the 12th. We would also like to ask permission to close all through traffic on Burwick Street from 6:00 PM till 11:00 PM on July 10th and 11th, and from 5:00 PM till 10:00 PM on July 12th. Fire police will be placed at the intersection of Broad and Burwick to control traffic during this time period. Also, on July 10th, we will be holding our annual fire truck parade through the borough and follow the same parade route as normal. Thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation, we would like to receive a written approval for the above request, so we may attach it to our special occasion license application.
Motion to adjourn to a custom assistance for our company, but. Motion by Dave, second by Brian, questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no?
Second communication is from Amy Dotson, Tamaka Blue Waves Booster President. My name is Amy Dotson, I'm writing on behalf of the Tamaka Blue Waves Swim Program, we are requesting use of the Bundalo Pool for our summer season practices. The closing of the high school pool for roof repairs has unfortunately left us with no local pool to hold our practices. We will not be holding any home swim meets during the summer season, and therefore only need a space a few times for practices. We hold our own insurance policy and will provide that if need be. Thank you for your consideration and feel free to contact me with any further questions.
Make motion to bring the Blue Waves request on the schedule to be applied by the pool manager.
Maybe we have one, I don't see any using the pool.
In the morning, they're looking to use it in the evenings.
Well, after seven o'clock?
Well, no, probably more like 5:30 to 7:00 or something like that. That's my estimate, this is when they're gonna, when they use it, but there shouldn't be any conflict with the fly, the morning.
No. Good. Is that a second time? Motion by Dave, second by Tom, any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
I just need a notification, you probably should request insurance information, just in a file.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no? Ayes have it.
That's all for you.
Girl manager, your board.
Yes, thank you, I put a note on the agenda about the sale of 234 Columbia Street. I had a person express interest in purchasing that property. That is a property that was demolished inside of ours, oh, quite a few years ago, I'm thinking in the nineties, and we tried to sell it before unsuccessfully. So I brought this up at the last meeting, and Council instructed me to advertise with bids. We opened bids last Thursday, and I received one bid in the amount of $100. And that's from Steve Madalavich, 423 East Union Street. Just one other note is Steve owns an adjoining property. He perhaps uses for a storage for his makes with his.
Are there standing code violations on the property? Has he been advised of them, if there are?
Oh, uh, no, there are, it's a vacant lot, let's think of it, it's an empty lot. We demolished the hall quite a couple years ago, and I think that it was on the list to be demolished, I think, I think.
Make motion to accept this bid.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Brian, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Just to note that we don't make money on our demolition projects, it's nice to get it off of our property, and this is how these handles make up their chance.
That's one less thing we have to maintain.
See, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no? Ayes have it.
Also, speaking of demolition, well, actually, let me backtrack, there was another property we talked about selling recently. I was approached again by this person, they told me they're serious about purchasing this property, this is also a demolition site that we've tried to sell several times unsuccessfully. The person's interested in 319 Washington Street, it's a small lot in the middle of a row. Recently, we had some people put, one of the neighbors put junk and stuff there, we made them move it, but I was approached by someone who's interested in that property.
It's not the person with the junk, is it?
Yeah.
It is.
I said if you buy it, you can't load it up with junk. Yeah, yeah. We did try to sell it in 2002, 2003, and again, 2013. So I guess my question is, would you like me to advertise for the sale of this again?
That property is of no use at all.
Absolutely not, no use.
No use at all.
It's of, I think, forty by sixty in the middle row.
And it's.
Across from George Street.
Do you think they're, do you think they're serious bidders?
They, they claim they are, this is the second time now they've asked.
And they didn't bid on last?
Um.
Is this the second time now?
Uh, the second time in like two weeks, and they've asked, so, we, yeah. So, like I said, we recommend they should be advertising for.
When was what? When was in thirteen, when was it before that?
2002, 2003, and again, 2013.
Would advertise, we should, 2002 too far away, it was, it was a ten, a ten or eleven and a thirteen.
Make a motion to advertise the sale, or advertise the 319 Washington Street?
Yes.
For sale.
So it's 300 dollars for an ad seller?
No, how much are you gonna get?
One second.
One second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tom, anybody have any questions?
I'm wondering how long is it gonna hang here?
Just a, a question, so we need, Tom brings up a good point, so we're gonna spend 300 dollars to advertise it, can we at least ask for a minimum bid? And at least get our advertising costs out, if it costs us 200 dollars, start a minimum bid at 200 bucks. If I can make anything, at least we should make our advertising costs.
Yeah, so the ad for Columbia, I think, was around 200, 225, I think it was around 225 dollars for Columbia Street.
So we've tried that in the past, and we don't get any bids, and then we have to re-advertise at the beginning. We end up paying to advertise them more than the time.
With this one, where you're at with this one, if you advertise it, and then they put a bid in, and if it's below what you're advertising, you can reject it, and you've already advertised twice, then you can negotiate your sale and say, look, we have to get, this is what we're looking at, and at least you have, then you know, the bid game.
Get rid of the property.
And that'll be, so you'll get that back on this, it's when you do it the first time that it gets, you know, you're gonna end up, it may be.
The motion is to advertise without a minimum. And just on the issue of putting junk on the property, that's really.
Kevin, did you know anyone that's?
Yeah.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
God, that was.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no? Ayes have it.
And, oh, you're getting back to the demolition, we only have several demolition projects who were worked recently, demolition of Fifth Street was finished, Gay Street is underway, should be done pretty soon, and then they'll be moving to the three properties on Spruce Street probably next week. So that's, that's going quite a while. Also, we're still, we're continuing with our street cleaning efforts, we should be wrapping up the spring cleanup next week, and the next two days will be doing some cleanup work as well, getting ready for Memorial Day weekend, or we should have a fountain up and running at Depot Square, please, for. And the pool is just about ready to go as well, we cleaned that, refilled it, and that should be ready for opening day.
I'm not the line painting guy.
I was, I was just, I was waiting for a buzz there, too.
We should be picking up the new line paint machine tomorrow, so hopefully next week, we'll do some line painting. We'll start with this one down here, of course, since that's drawn so much attention.
Well, that, and if, I think we talked about dashblades or something like that, trying to guide people through the five points, and like, no, you're right.
That's another thing.
They made that on primary as well, yeah, that's the other thing to do.
So hopefully, you know, once we have a handle on the cleanup, then we can get to do some line painting.
What's the, what's the anticipated duration, like, how long is street paint typically pass, I'm just curious?
Oh, well, we use the oil base, should last pretty much all season.
Okay, but we expect to just give you around this, and?
Yeah, yeah, that's all. Some of the, we're in streetscape, some of the line to paint with thermoplastic, which is like a hot plastic that's cooled down, we got a couple years out of that. They said five, but we didn't get five years out of it, maybe three. They also offer a water-based paint, we tried that, and it didn't last very long at all. You know, if it lasted a month, it was, it was alive, so we got away from the oil base, and we found the, I mean, we got away from the water base, we found the oil base to be the best performing.
Okay.
Yeah, the other weather and the plows were on it, it wipes it right out of the weather, so.
Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Actually, if I can ask you to give a contact, we were here today about a potential surveying and architectural.
Oh, yes.
It seems like the appropriate time to talk about it.
Okay.
But I guess that.
You're looking to, you've seen a need for the bathhouse project, or what to complete the application?
Well, we're looking at some mega grant application for the, for the bathhouse, is that right? The application is due by the end of June. One of, we have pretty much everything we need on the list, except we need a professional's estimate of the cost, an engineer, architect, et cetera. It, in order to do that, we think it would be very helpful to have some survey work done there, and at least a preliminary site plan. We don't have good elevations of that particular part of the pool. So our thought was to give it to a local surveyor and architect or engineer to do that work for us, it wouldn't be reimbursed by the grant, the grant won't pay for anything you do in preparation, you know, to apply for the grant. But we feel that would answer some questions we have as far as handicapped ramps and sewer line, making sure we look off the pitch for the sewer line. And what's everything? Oh, drainage, make sure, make sure we have a proper drainage, we're looking at, like, if it was successful, which we used the, it was precast concrete walls, and we used that, that was standing, it's been working very well. So that was a thought that Rob and Dan had. I have to ask Dan, we were successfully talking to.
I had, I had a chance to talk to Mark, he felt that the engineering and architecture design would end up being somewhere between five and six percent of the project, so that's about the only way to get us a number. And I tried reaching Phil Nowitzki, I think, successfully.
Was that full of log, this one?
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
You're, you're talking about something much worse than that.
You have a rough, more rough site plan? Did you, did you speak with him about that, some preliminary survey or site plan?
He, he, he said, was without really getting, looking at the site, he just felt like, it was this thing, five to six percent, and that was for engineering and architecture work.
Right, I mean, he must be looking at the, the design of the whole project, yeah.
Right. So he has to look at.
There is no plan, you don't have anything drafted up for the bathhouse.
Oh, right, yeah.
And how's it?
Is it something, any area, I suppose, that someone else could get for us?
I don't think you can bring that stuff up.
Actually, they can do it as well.
I mean, they have surveyors, and they have access to making drawings, and they know our community.
Sure. They know those parts, they've all done it for us.
The patches are in here.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's a little bit, I guess the need is a little bit time sensitive, because we're not late to, on a June 6th, so I'm guessing we'll be here until the 16th, and this is due, I think, in June, so I like to try to finish it early, because I'm finding a way to go up there very last week, so I get it, so I get it, we crawl.
I'm hoping that tomorrow, as well.
Well, I guess I'm hoping, I'm trying to think, if you have a direction and authorization to proceed with this.
Is there a second?
I'm trying to do the right motion, it's, I guess I'd like to make the motion to authorize the Borough Manager to solicit prices for surveying and architectural services needed to complete the bathhouse, great application.
So if he does that, still not getting that done, he's gonna get pricing, wait for millimeter.
You can, you can have them make the decision, with, you know, after this consulting with the recreation, we can hold on and have.
Oh, the motion is to do that.
Second. Motion by Dave, second, any questions or comments? Just that, he can go ahead and proceed with the work after the opening of the neighborhood. That way you can go ahead, you're not giving them a product launch, they're gonna correct it. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no? That is that.
One more thing for Kevin, when you get the chance on their out-patching, have
One more thing for Kevin, when you get the chance on their out-patching, have any thoughts about, you mean, people also points about the breakers now?
Uh, we have two. We got last section, we're very wrong.
Oh, now, that, if, there has, through Street is the best, it was traffic that goes up to the school, from that street.
The, uh, railroad tracks?
Just before the railroad tracks, railroad tracks, plenty of tracks, two tracks again.
Right.
Tracks.
I bet it.
So much traffic that goes up to that school. Down at two thirty. We need to, we need to do something better at that, at that application. Is, is it all up to the railroad? Are we talking to the railroad to fix it?
Well, you haven't talked to the railroad. Um, uh, been in communication with, uh, their police chief, his, uh, relations officer, and we've been talking about, um, those men's, you know, from Rock Street.
Against rats, very annoying.
They're aware, they're well aware of that, um, reported, I think, um, um, it's off their list, I think. We've also talked about Screw Street, so what we'd like to do is, uh, go there and nail how sections of that school and relay it. Not just catch it.
But we, you need the railroad.
Uh, certain area around the tracks, it's the railroad's responsibility. Uh, but we found, uh, and it's been a crisis lately to, uh, to do it. Because it seems to be out much better, because more guys who have more, more experience in that. And then they, you know, like Mark, those, Charles, I think.
So is that, is that, then your plan is that?
Yes, eventually.
Is that.
Have a date. Yeah, uh, with someone we were talking about, um, we, it's a date, uh, yeah.
I mean, you know, there needs to be use of that road when you do.
It's good when you do a school, so.
Right.
But, you know.
Some.
Yeah, be able to target, or trigger pot, or, 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 so.
I'm, I'm over the death.
Kevin, I think, as I have to ask, obviously, you said, I mean, we, we think that we do a better job maintaining their portion of responsibility, but, and, and, do you have any interest in costing materials and labor to fix it, or?
Uh, no, I mean, they're just.
Give you this a month, you're free to charge, it's nice, but, you know, also, this is a problem.
I could discuss that with, uh, well, we haven't had a real extensive project. This would be larger than most, most of the things we still have to have to do and, uh, the cost is, you know, this would become more, uh, and more pressing. So I could discuss that with, uh, if they need, uh, with ours, you know, uh, see what we can look out. So the middle of the tracks and, uh, for, to, so I use their responsibility.
Right.
Anything else?
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Please, Chief.
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Committee reports.
Two things, President, the, uh, mutual aid agreement that was sent by Nesbitt Honing, we need to, I have to solicit a look over that, seem like standard mutual aid agreement signature. You know, that would suggest is they get the proper terminology, other than the Muckler Fire Company. So I don't know if we get, when it comes time, we can take action on that with those, uh, changes.
We can figure that out, you know, we just tell them we need changes.
I think we did that last year, that's a result.
Yeah.
I know we did that one last year.
John, John called.
We changed language on it and everything.
You don't have to, you know, be up there.
No, this one has it, and it runs out each year, but whatever, so we can do that later on when it comes to the time, or, if that doesn't need to be done by, I mean, I can make a motion to approve that now, kind of, uh.
With the change of the.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement with, uh, with Nesbitt Honing, with the changes to the Muckler Fire coming notated as the Muckler Fire Department. And also striking the signature space for the President of Muckler Fire Company.
Sir.
What's my advice, Mr. President?
I mean, you have thirty and twenty mark.
Any questions or comments? You got that, too?
Yeah.
Anybody from the floor? All those.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, the, uh, CAC, uh, is in need of additional members. We have, uh, one person who, uh, had resigned, another person who can make it only, uh, periodically when their health is up to it. And we have another man who, uh, works, uh, varying shifts and he has to miss some of our meetings. Uh, so we really need two or more additional members. I was wondering if, uh, newspapers can advertise, maybe get some publicity on that.
Thank you, man. Anything on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
Just one last.
So, yeah, for two, two of those CAC, we have at least two.
Just one last thing under that, uh, we, we got a copy of, uh, the report from the attendance of, uh, one of the chiefs to the FDIC conference. So that's there for certificates, expenditures, everything else, uh, worth it, who still has the money there for another national conference, um, budget, so. Wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that did get listed. That's all I know.
Any other committee reports? No mayor's report tonight, anybody from the floor, just what your best counsel? Solicitors report?
No, I, I just, but I did review that, some of that stuff with the forensics, I thought we came from that.
I was asking, this is, we were talking about the, you know, is there any progress?
Well, three times to that attorney, I'm just gonna certify for trial.
Okay.
I mean, he, he said he was gonna be able to negotiate with him and advise him that, and they just ignore it, so I'm just gonna certify.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure that we get the engineer that he's available and say is on our, on their problem.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we have the other, then say me something.
Yeah, we, we, uh, that's, we already admitted.
All right, we have the, the reports from the various departments of the borough.
We've, we've sent them to the.
And motion by Dave second, by Tom, any questions or comments? That, anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes aye. Unfinished business. At last, at the first meeting in May, we talked about the, we about block grant application. And, uh, it was determined that the, the bathhouse project that we allocated sixty-one thousand dollars for in two thousand fourteen allocation is not eligible. So, uh, we need to de-allocate those funds and then also designate what we want our two thousand fifteen approximately hundred thousand dollars to go with it. So, you know, uh, if we, if we have any further recommendations on that, Kevin, if they have any suggestions?
Just, just so I'm clear, eligible projects for two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, in office, what areas of the borough?
Accessibility projects anywhere, so any project that deals with accessibility, I think, or accessibility.
So the bathhouse is being accessible?
If you, if you, if the project was to make them more accessible, but you couldn't build a new.
You couldn't build a new. Okay, so accessibility anywhere and, and then what, in what look, in, in what wards?
Uh, well, and then the, the map that she presented to us was basically the northward, uh, any project that we can get neighborhood project there, so working, uh, street painting in, in, uh, uh, would be eligible. As far as I could tell, that was the only thing that was going.
You know, but how about some of those retaining walls on the, on the board? There's some retaining walls up there that are looking pretty shady.
We had a couple walls that, uh, fell down recently, actually, is another plan we, we need to readdress. Yep. It was, uh, one in Washington, one in Water Street, fell recently.
Water Street considering more?
Well, the map, the map includes, uh, uh, Willie Tyreworth Ward and then a part of the Middle Ward.
I'd, I'd tell you, I'd really tell you, this is probably just coming right out of the, the blue, but, you know, if we ever, and I'm not taking a shot here, but if we ever got the determination on the property, on Pleasant Row, the, the, the slice of property, it had been suggested for, put a set of steps in there for people in North Ward to access down through. Because right now they use that path that's through there and everything else. That had been suggested with the steps. We don't know, he can't sell something that's not his. We were in a, we were in a, in a dispute on that.
This the property that you were gonna use for a step?
Uh, you're talking about the Paper Street address?
Yes.
Uh, what, next to, um.
Between, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh.
You get? That's good.
Yes.
You hear that?
Last June, continuation last June.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes.
How about some of the gardeners up there on those side streets?
You could do, uh.
I mean, there's, some of them are like each a half pipe.
Yeah. Um, well, like Mike says, you could do accessibility anywhere, there's no restriction on that.
Including, including the borough hall. And she looked at our bill notes and said that we should, we should be replacing that one.
In the bathroom.
In the bathroom. The, uh, the other thing you can do anywhere is anything that's a, specifically of affordable housing renovation or rehab, or, as long as the, the user is itself is, is in control of it. So, for example, South Beach, if we owned that property on South Beach, we can re, we can use this money to rehab it, as long as the, the owner or renter is, is comfortable. You can, and you can do that in the, but there's a lot of tricky attachments.
Yeah, there are, any more, there's quite a few, because you get into lead-based paint.
So certainly a stairway, I mean, we talked about, we talked about accessibility to the lamps.
Reclaiming walls and, and garden rails.
It was stairway ring qualified as, as accessibility, but, um, demolition, we could do anywhere, demolition, elimination of light, giving.
I thought we maxed out or demolition.
But you can max on that. I think we.
So for two thousand fifteen, we can, we should max out, I'm assuming we're gonna max out our demolition. Max out our administration.
We'll have to, we're.
You could do paving, you could do drainage, you could do water sewer, not only in soul. For, for, and part of Middle Ward. It includes, uh, overdue, what is that? Next, we have beyond. Greenwood Market, goes over Market Streets. So all North Ward and then the Middle Ward up to Market Street.
Water Street's not?
Water? Water?
I love it. River, Seaton.
Yeah.
Is, is that wall, is that wall is, is?
Well, the chunk of that fell down, to fix that. Much, uh, Mr. Anderson, behind his house, a piece of that fell down on my street. The wall behind my house is falling down.
We're not doing that.
It holds up the street. No, I'm serious. It's got its lean like that. I mean, since we're talking about walls, I.
Do we, do we know when we have to decide, when we have to submit the application, when we have to finalize the, the list?
Oh, we have a second hearing, I think Karen might assess.
There'll be a second, county lawyer, there won't be a second hearing. We can talk about it in a meeting, but there won't be a second formal hearing. The second hearing will be in, in possible court.
Can we, can we get a list of, Joe, possibilities that they discussed for the next meeting?
How about steps and walls?
Can you give us a list of the walls in that, in that, that new work and, and then?
Actually, I, till all this gets submitted, approved, and all that, I don't really wanna wait that long on some of these walls. That's the only trouble.
Can you just, maniac, go and look and see where, or do you know where they're at?
Pretty much. Well, well, we, yeah, I mean, we're.
When you do this, you're reimbursed.
Partially collapsed, yeah.
Dan, we can be able to prepare a list of the available projects, the accessibility projects that we might have, and anything in that, in that ridge wall that might be eligible, walls, stairway, or, 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 street, even street paving, even, even street paving.
And garden rails. In case of that pipe. You don't pay for it, it's, I would sell it.
Yeah. But I wanted to put that back on the agenda, just so we don't, so we, September will be there before, we have to have the list in the county before September, so we can have the, the.
Because we still don't have an answer on twenty fourteen. It seems each year gets slower, 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 and later, later. I'd hate to put off some of these walls, but, you know, until this all gets approved, they're gonna be completely gone, and you might lose half the street.
Yeah.
But certainly if you have the list to discuss, but, I mean, you know, you're probably gonna have some sections of the streets on there, we're gonna have to step some of this, you know.
Oh, I mean, and that's.
A number of possibilities.
Not, no offense, but. We don't wanna wait on the walls, yet we have some of these walls that have been down for months upon months upon months, and we don't have any information on to fix them?
But these are all recent.
The Water Street one?
Yeah, that just went, uh, uh, a week ago.
No, no, that's been down months, right by the church, absolutely down months.
Months.
Yep.
That just went.
There's a whole section, Kevin, it's out, right by the base of the garage.
Yeah.
That's more than a week. More than a week. My point is, if, if we're, if we're seeing these things, we should be starting to get information, start to get prices so that we can. Because, I know, but we're just standing out, that one in particular has been there for a while. Let's get the information, we gotta do it through CDBG, let's get, let's do it.
We've bought four of them.
Can't fall on.
We've used a lot of them, Scott.
Well, it's a good take.
Kevin, you, you mentioned something about drainage and sewer. Okay. And you're saying the drainage and sewer project would be eligible, provided it's in N S O.
Yeah, now there's all sorts of strains, but.
Right, okay. Uh, I mean, when you're in, you're talking about these wall projects and things like that, I mean, uh, are you talking about, uh, you know, our forces doing it, outside forces doing it, uh, you know, that, that kind of thing, with, in general estimation, I mean, I've seen Water Street, I mean, this scope of one to ten, I mean, is that a ten? Being difficulty versus, uh, you know, maybe Washington Street, maybe.
We, we typically don't do water and sewer under this, uh, we use our water and school funds for that. Uh, there's usually, you know, twice as many projects that we have money for.
Right.
So we've been using this for like recreation and paving, demolition, uh, is mostly what we've been using it for.
I mean, are we talking about potentially replacing an entire wall on Water Street? Or just the part that's?
Just the part that's fallen in.
Yeah, okay. Uh.
It would be a combination of both, we, we, use our people and outside people.
Uh, again, this is.
We can handle it.
Right. Um, I guess what I'm, what I'm kind of just, or trying to figure out is, again, what are we doing with the funds that we already have allocated or approved? Uh, because there is, again, a portion of that, which I guess we could use in the project, right, in the muckler. There is some part of something relating to disabilities or.
No.
Removal of, of barriers.
Not for something new, if you're building something new, you can't use CDBG money for it. If you, if, they need a ramp, if they're putting up a new bathhouse and you have to put a ramp up to it, you can't use the money for the ramp from CDBG.
If you're.
If it's.
Not.
If it's existing and you need to put a ramp, you can't use it for new construction.
You could, you could, you could use it for accessibility on new construction, because the assumption is new construction.
Access, accessibility. Oh, that's right.
Pretty sure that's.
Just the rate, yeah, that's right, that's the rehab.
So I don't think there's anything eligible with the bathhouse project. It doesn't mean there's not accessibility issues every, that's a fair, I don't know.
Right, I guess that was, my point is that, so what happened with that sixty thousand, oh, that's what we're talking about.
It's the, yeah, we're trying to, that's what we're trying to figure out. Sixty-four thousand dollars, we're running two thousand. We had it worked, now we can't use it for that, so we're trying to know what else we can do.
So.
I don't know, was that, they're talking about the park.
Right, because, because the other, well, that Brian brings that up is, uh, we did, we did, uh.
River Street, in North River Park, you know?
Yeah, bring parking user in zone. Yeah, thank you. We did, uh.
Karen certainly kept doing that.
She's, yeah, she did.
She's okay.
Don't, I don't remember hearing, you don't remember hearing that, you don't remember hearing that.
We, but we did, we did, we used funds, CDBG money, we got the meters.
Prior, yes, yes, we, we stepped back, we stepped back to allow the recreation to take the.
Cause we only had so much we could do.
Right, well, if you recall, uh, folks at DCD said we could only use it to buy parking meters in the area where we don't issue permits, yeah.
So there's railroad street, we've got Monchamp Street, we've got Pine Street.
They're all permits.
Uh, street.
Not, not all the areas, yeah.
The department ones is South Railroad Street.
Oh, there we go.
Uh, South Railroad Street sells meters.
Well, we wouldn't have to do the parking lots, they all have digital meters.
Right, that's what I'm asking, so you don't have those, but you've got Monchamp Street, you've got Pine Street, Railroad Street, yeah.
I actually laughed when I pulled up the meter and put a nickel in it.
We use residential permits on Monchamp Street.
Yeah.
Meters there.
At least.
South, 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 I believe it's meter.
I think what Kevin is saying is that we've done all the meters we can with CDBG.
Almost my understanding.
Can you verify that?
I'm, I'm, that was my understanding, yeah, because we.
Dan, you know?
I believe that, I remember them saying that when we, when we did the last.
Yeah, we did, but Karen was here, she said, you know, in two thousand fourteen, everything changed, so a lot of the stuff that you did in two thousand thirteen and earlier is no longer eligible. I mean, that was one of the few things that proved to tell me.
So I think what we're looking for, Kevin and Dan, is we're looking for a list of eligible projects, even if they're not, even if they're things we're not gonna do, we still wanna see them on like a menu type of list. And particularly, and also include any street paving that we might be able to do in that area. That's always a, it's always a crowd teaser.
Oh, yeah, Market Street's always a good one. I can think of several. Very tough. I can think of a few. Well, yeah, well, I have to, um, I talked to Karen about it, and you have to stay away from the arterial streets. Cause you have to, it has to serve this area. When you get into the bigger streets, they serve, they'll serve beyond this area. So you've gotta stay away from the big streets and focus on the smaller neighborhood streets. So she wants us to give her a map, and she'll question the CDBG specifically.
So, so let me ask you this now, I'm gonna ask you a question. Can CDBG money be used for, cause we see it in other places, that fire companies and fire departments get CDBG money? Is that an eligible thing?
To do what?
Well, to do anything, I'm just asking.
Built for construction.
For construction, is that the only thing?
I think for training facilities, yeah. I think accessibility could come in.
A strictly, not for equipment or anything else?
Not sure.
Not sure.
Because I got a hell of a project that'll take all sixty-two thousand dollars. I'm serious, now, 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 let's put this in perspective here. We got to deal with a mandate for radios, okay? So the fire department's gotten grants to take care of cost of radios, they got grants from the county, and even out of the goodness of the fire department, the borough owned ladder truck got radios put in it, so it didn't cost the borough anything for radios. But guess what, all that being said, we're still short, big time. So if that's an eligible project?
I just, street pavement, we have walls crumbling in the streets that.
I'm just asking this.
All right, I see something. This building and any other municipal buildings, uh, really, we should be looking strongly at accessibility from the fair, fair housing program. It's only a matter of time until somebody comes in and can't get a wheelchair around the corner, you know, from my dad, or even the double doors out here, they don't meet any of the codes. Um, I think we really should start looking at accessibility, uh, before we get into trouble with fair housing laws.
So, so we would replace the front doors?
There's, there's a lot more than, not, not the exterior.
Make a list of inner ones.
Make, we, we want a list of the accessibility, but we also want a list of the walls, the streets, and the, the fire company radios that we can, that are all in the, we can see those too. With, with, with some cost estimate. Reality in last year's form. I think this year, the amount that we're talking about, after you take away administration and then we're like, you know, say about sixty thousand, is that correct?
Yeah.
Remember last reality, and everything that we have, so we, we're counting up to sixty thousand.
Twenty, yeah, sixty-one thousand.
All right, anything else on, maybe on a block grant?
Oh, yes, uh, I, Kelly did send us a, uh, letter, something, a agreement, uh, should be attached to the agenda. Uh, they asked us to mention this or exonerate. Uh, Dan and I went over this, we, uh, place a call to Gary Bender, who we, we didn't quite understand the, um, the allowances for the, uh, that they were talking about. We wanna make sure we understood how this works, before we, before we presented it to the council. So if I, if I could suggest maybe, uh, we could just sit on it to the next meeting, um, till, till I, we, we can just talk to, uh, Ms. Gary and Karen.
What's your interpretation of that?
What we. If, they're asking, uh, if we wanna do the twenty fifteen application forms, and if so, they're giving, I guess they're giving us the allowance of fifty-five hundred dollars. But how many does it take to provide us with allowance of a thousand dollars? Now, my question is, well, where is this allowance coming from? Is this coming out of our head?
My, my reason is, it's very big, it's a thousand dollars or something.
That's what I'm thinking, but I want to be certain, or, we have to, before we come to council, instead of, instead of who is. We, uh, they have, they have a chance to follow up with Gary's. That's what it sounds like to me. Why don't I ask you a question?
I, I suggest, do we have to include this?
Give us a fair line.
If you look at page three, executive section three hundred and twenty, it's kind of ambiguous, it says, subject recipient, which is us, so allocated, you just have to grant a, with the administration. And then it talks about, we'll be allocated five hundred of the administrative funds to the, to the advertising, et cetera, et cetera. And then we'll also receive, uh, an allocation of fifteen hundred for over second base. So my understanding is they're gonna keep the allowance.
I mean, that's what it sounds like, which would be in the neighborhood of, uh, under the thousand dollar plan, uh, there would be eighteen thousand dollars, under five thousand dollars. Under five thousand dollars, fourteen thousand dollars.
Can you give clarification on that?
Yeah. Oh, they're, they're asking us to talk about, uh, for my feedback or acceptance.
Any other unfinished business? Bills and claims?
All right, I, I, I mean, I'm gonna make, through, through bills, but we did look at Oliver, Fran, um, that one bill that, it looked like we were paying it twice, but it worked out, it was a nine thousand dollar.
Fourteen thousand dollars.
Forty-five hundred dollars.
But then, all the bills are in order, so I'll make a more, uh, paid bills.
Second.
Question.
Um, second question.
If you have any questions or comments, anybody can report, call us, say hi.
Hi, hi.
New business.
But we, we, we've got an invite to go to Long Range, uh, end up with.
Yeah, the, they're updating the Long Range, the Long Range, uh, it's a, it's also a transportation, the Long Range, it's, it's right over there in summer. It's in summer, so pass that along to, it actually served as a school county representative on the Department of County, who that updates those, the transportation. They're having regional meetings and, and actually have one on the summer, that's what's pretty cool, so I thought we knew what to take with you, that would be, so.
I'm here.
They're not, they're, I'm, I'm not.
The other thing is, uh, I've been reading in the newspaper, that last year called out the EDP, it's coming down on those guys. So hopefully our district, there's Penner Creek, is this Penner, is that one?
Yeah, Penner Creek, yeah.
Hopefully in the next couple of years, that'll get mixed up. Um, and one other thing is, I've been taking walks around, um, different places to walk, and we've been going on to Al Creek and walking. Al Creek is beautiful, those dams are really nice, but, um, last time we were around there, there was this trailer which was along. And I'm wondering, even if people are, they're in this, what do we, taxpayers, what, seven million of that? Yeah, I was wondering if we could get a brochure makeup made up of the Al Creek dams, to show people to make a walk around the dams. Maybe have a little history of the, uh, dam and the brochure and. I wanna know where you're running. But I did that again, whatever. Al Creek. And I do want to, sometimes, you know. I did talk, I thought it was good.
Anything that happens out there in the front of life is extremely helpful.
Al Creek brochure.
They have to talk to Tom about it, I think we could figure something out. Yeah. These empty sessions are real safe. You guys, I have a resolution here, I was gonna present lies.
Just a resolution.
Okay. Um, we have a resolution in our packet, um, authorizing, uh, Kevin and Micah to, sign any necessary documents regarding the purchase of two forty Center Street, a lot of, to make a resolution about that resolution.
Second, Michael Davis, second Brad Ryan, another question, Kevin, wanna explain this to me?
Oh, sure. The, uh, that's the, uh, two forty Center Street's the former Jose Pontiac property. Uh, that was taken by the Commonwealth for the bridge project on Center Street. Uh, the Commonwealth is now ready to sell that. And they've, uh, given us right up first refusal. Uh, and council discussed the issue, and executive session decided that, uh, maybe of benefit referral and, uh, they're, like, purchasing it. Uh, the Commonwealth established a fair market value for the property of twenty-two thousand four hundred. And they also, uh, you know, would proceed, you know, uh, as a fair market value, they also need a resolution, uh, which you have before. This, this is, uh, uh, based on a sample, uh, you cannot, uh, they'll also need a letter from us, which I've prepared, uh, some statement that, uh, it'll be, uh, relaxing the public purpose. Uh, there are no deed restrictions. And we do have one more in school name crossing a portion of the property to the south. So, uh, a resolution and a list of post-staff and the transfer of property for all.
Any, any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor, Mr. Justice? Not, or we're all called over?
Karen?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
And Beresky?
Yes.
It's just a current, it's like, we keep a single, probably, we met an executive session between the last meeting and this one, discussed real estate issues?
I didn't, but. I think that was between, I know that was between the, the April meeting and, and we did, we did note that. I didn't, I didn't.
I have to make firsts.
We, yeah, we went, we went in the executive session and came back, yeah.
We met, we, we did meet May first, and we questioned the first about this, and it's reflected in, in, in minutes today, or from May fifth.
It wasn't out until May fifth.
Is this a different one? What's that?
Yes.
Oh, uh, yeah, it wasn't really.
That, uh, withdraw the comment.
Do you strike that off to listen to me as that word?
I didn't hear.
There was no. Now, the executive session is one of, a, a forum of council, a meet to deliberate or discuss or report to decide an issue before the council. I know what you're, I know the meaning you're talking about, and it wasn't, it wasn't an, an executive session.
Okay. Kevin, what's, uh, what's your estimate on the timeframe for this, the transfer of property? Yes, oh, uh, we didn't talk timeframe, I don't know, twenty fifteen, hope, hope so.
I suppose so.
My, sure, it's, it's, you talked with the state, uh.
It's Pet Dawes.
Right.
I think it seems to take three years, so I, I don't know. No, I didn't say that, I don't know. What I said, I'm afraid.
Any other new business, tell me, you're gonna try and write like Gary, and I'll never get it done. One thing, one thing under new business, I know that, that Kevin is interested in hiring some part-time workers in the summer, I can't remember the status of that.
Sure.
You know, we have a lot of grass cutting.
Quite a bit, yeah, it's getting to be that season. Um, well, we, we advertised for part-time seasoning workers, and we did good response, uh, we, we got close to fifty. Uh, Rob and I have been going through, um, we didn't have a chance to talk with, well, we narrowed it down to eight people. Uh, we didn't have a chance to turn them all into talk with them, I, I was hoping we'd be able to do that for tonight. Uh, but I, I have a list here, uh, with, uh, of, of the applicants. I, I guess, uh, I, I guess if, uh, council was agreeable to this, um, if perhaps, um, Rob and I could, um, talk to these people, um, and bring them on board with, uh, with, you know, consulting with the finance committee. Uh, if, if that's an option.
We're talking about, we're talking about, as needed, you're getting a list together, but as needed, help, I, I don't see any reason why you guys can't put the list together and use them as needed. As long as we determine the, you know, we set the, set the, the wage for the hourly rate, I have no problem with this.
I don't have any problem.
Get the list, hire, hire eight part-time people to counter us, going to make a motion, if you give them permission to hire eight people.
I just, I'd go like to, you know, I'd like to come, you know, come in. You know, go like to, or, oh, yeah, I will.
Are you recommending those eight people?
Absolutely.
Or are you not ready at this point?
We're not quite ready.
See, that, that's the issue too, when we hire somebody who, who make a motion to hire a specific person to a specific position, even like he is listed eight people, they think they're, they're, they're.
Oh, I mean, if that list is, is eight, if that list is ten, if it, if they add on or whatever, or they don't use them, you're, you have a collective list. I don't know that we need to get all of them, every name on that collective list. We do, really?
Yeah, we're gonna hire somebody, yeah.
No, we're gonna hire them, they're gonna work four hours.
You, you, you've done, you've done have, you've done have a part-time resource, you've done have lay cards to just to say that. And you would do it if you had, had extra people to do, uh, with CDLs to plow for you?
The, the question, the, the issue here is Kevin, Kevin's gonna wanna hire them, he couldn't, tonight, and our, 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 so that's the issue, if we could give him the authorization to hire those people. We'd still have to vote.
Still voting on, we'll come back, you can ratify his action.
Maybe that was a better way to phrase it, do what you got to do, and then you ratify it and prove it. We'll still, you know, we'll still.
We're still, you know, we're still working for, keep in touch with the fire, that's maybe, that's, you know, what we're doing. Oh, that, that would be fantastic if we could do that, because, uh, a lot of them are high school, college kids, they'll be coming available soon, and we'll wanna, we'll wanna use them.
And our auditors are gonna look for them in a minute.
They're waiting.
They do, my, I don't think.
Yeah, they do. They, they were here, uh, this weekend, actually, should be finishing up, but it was tomorrow.
So you know what you're doing with those?
Yes.
It's the lesson, we'll, we'll roll on it.
Any other new business? Any, any, we're getting executive session tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
We're gonna be a second, Tom, although the favor's a high.
Aye, aye.
You know, I said, we're, we're.
Was that important, was that, uh, with the, with the key, for, maybe you, Mike, listen to my explanation.